All right, welcome to the Committee of the Whole for October 11. The meeting is called to order. If anyone is trying to watch online, there is, we are experiencing technical difficulties and we don't have video feed. All right, joining us, well, I'm going to call the meeting to order. So in the boardroom, we have trustees Robbie, Carol, Donna, Shin-Yi, Jean, and Amy. Joining us online are trustees Joanna and Margot. So as of right now, trustees Navid and Kelly are not here. I will note their presence once they join. Tonight, Carol will be honoring the land.
Thank you. Halton as we know it today is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishnaabi to the Atawanaran to the Hodenoshoni and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, and ancestors that walk before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you. Shin-Yi, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I do have a point to note, and that is that the last item on the agenda, when we move into private, we will only be moving into private to discuss personnel, not negotiation. So that's the amendment I'd like to put forth this evening. Jean, would you like to move that motion to amend the agenda?
I would like to move that motion, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Are there any discussions on the amended agenda? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved as amended by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? All right, seeing none. We have for approval, item 2.1, which are the minutes of Committee of the Whole meeting for September 13, 2023. Carol, would you like to move a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion? Joanna?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to bring to attention the wording under 1.1. In my mind, wording is very important. And that statement there reads, "Three trustees were absent." I believe trustees are, you know, required to, and typically as a procedural thing, we let the chair and vice chair know if we're going to be absent. So we, in essence, submit our regrets. And so I would just ask that that wording be presented a little bit differently. It could say trustees Ahmed Oliver and Amos sent their regrets and we're not in attendance. I just think it's a softer...
It's a softer wording.
Less judgmental, yeah.
All right, manager Gortmaker? I can't see you, so is that something you would be amenable to changing on the minutes?
I will note that change, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items for discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, so seeing none, the minutes, revised minutes are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, so this evening, we have a few items for discussion. First up, we're going to be discussing about six different administrative procedures. Our designate, our director designate this evening is Sari. So, Sari, I will give the floor to you so that you could lead with the APs.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair Rocha. As you can see on your agenda, there are six administrative procedures that are before you. They have been revised to varying degrees. The first four are within the domain or the authority of human resources. I can certainly speak to those quickly before I turn it over to Superintendent Fowler and Superintendent Nagoy to speak to their specific APs. With respect to the human resources APs, they are the Hiring Summer or Co-op Students AP, the Individualized Work Accommodation AP, Criminal Background Checks and Employee Personnel Files. All of the changes before you are, again, housekeeping in nature, nothing substantive or significant by way of revisions. I did receive several comments and questions from trustees in relation to the review dates of these APs and some of the terminology and definitions that exist in some of them, in particular, the Work Accommodation AP. So I can speak quickly to the revision schedules of these APs. As you know, we're undertaking a comprehensive sort of review of all of our APs and policies to ensure consistency in terms of review dates, format, content, sections, and so on. And we're making some inroads in that in terms of establishing consistency and across all of the APs. So you will see some APs are subject to review every four years, some are subject every three years, some are subject annually. What I can say to you is APs can be reviewed every four years. A three-year review cycle is not necessary per se. Having said that, some APs are required to be reviewed annually as per legislation. For example, the Occupational Health and Safety Act requires us to review some APs annually. And we also review APs out of cycle in the event that there is a ministry directive or memo that engages a particular AP that requires us to review them. So again, all this to say that we're working towards consistency in the review cycle for all of those APs. Trustee Baxter, I did notice that you raised the question in relation to the Individualized Work Accommodation AP. You're absolutely correct, thank you for that. The AP engages a very specific exercise or duty to accommodate around medical or abilities and disabilities. The AP speaks to all of the grounds under the code. So certainly, we can fine-tune that to really only list the grounds that engages the AP. So I'm thankful for your feedback on that AP. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. If there are any other questions that may have risen since you've last reviewed the APs, I'm happy to take them before I turn it over to my colleagues.
All right, just let the record show that trustee Kelly has joined the meeting. Shin-Yi, you have a question?
Yes. I have a question, two questions about the Work Accommodation AP. So this work accommodation means a reasonable change of the or adjustment of the work and workplace environment according to physical or mental situation. So I still have the question, if the mental, if some staff employee has a mental health issues, because we need to define this as office work or this as a position facing the students. And how do we define the position? What is suitable to work with the students directly? Because we know some mental health issue, maybe this is, we also need to take care of the students. They are young people, mental health issue. So this is one thing. The other one is regarding the Ontario Human Rights Code and the Protected Ground, those highlights in the Ontario Human Rights Code. And for the accommodation, work accommodation based on that. And so how do we know those claims, Protected Ground, are true? Can we, how can we verify that? Because this is the AP, we need to have a very detailed procedure to verify all these things. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, trustee Jiang. So with respect to the first question, the arrangements that we put in place for any particular employee, be it a teacher, an education worker, or a member of our workforce who works at the corporate office, is really guided and informed by what the employee produces in terms of their limitations and restrictions as supported and substantiated by their physician. So in the case of mental health challenges, the physician or the treating specialist would provide us with the limitations and restrictions that are present in this instance for this particular employee. And based on those limitations and restrictions, we then engage in an exercise where we can find suitable arrangement or suitable accommodations for the employee. So in the case where the challenges, for instance, the mental health and well-being of a particular staff member is significantly impacted where they are unfit, for example, to practice or unfit to be in the classroom for, because their limitations are such, then we would have to act accordingly. So that's the general framework. It's informed by a clinician's diagnoses and documentation with respect to what those limitations and restrictions are. Now with respect to your other question, in terms of verifying the legitimacy, if, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that the grounds that they are, that the employee is bringing forward are legitimate or sincere. Obviously, we, you know, we have a few methods and a few established conventions and principles in terms of how we tackle those requests on a case-to-case basis. Some grounds may require some verification depending on, you know, with the purpose of the accommodation. But there isn't really a hard and fast rule in terms of, you know, the verification process. Some requests may require additional information, not necessarily verification, but additional information. I can frame it in those terms. But yes, the employer, we have a duty to inquire, and we have a duty to work with the employee. It's a joint responsibility. It's not responsibility solely on the employer to find a solution for an accommodation request. So I hope that answers your question. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other speakers, would you like to move on to the next APs?
Certainly, so if I may, I will turn it over to Superintendent Fowler to speak to the next AP, Pediculosis, please.
Thank you, through you trustee Rocha and to all trustees. The Pediculosis AP, also commonly known as head lice, is being updated. There are a, I know everyone's laughing because they're all starting to itch. We've all been there, I myself. So one of the things we've realized is that this AP is no longer in alignment with the recommendations as put forth by the Canadian Pediatric Society. We certainly know that head lice is a nuisance, but it is not a medical disease or concern. So the changes you're going to see today will seem quite different from our current practice here in Halton District School Board. But we are making these recommendations based on conversations with our public health unit. So Halton Region Public Health has actually updated their website and communication to ensure that it is in alignment with the Canadian Pediatric Society and guidance. We're also doing this in collaboration with our Cotermina Board. So the biggest changes is that we are moving away from extended student exclusions. So our current process, if a child, if someone shared that there was head lice, if a parent called in and said, "My child has head lice," they would be excluded from school until such time as they could be screened by a screening agency. And that may have resulted in students being out of school for extended periods of time. So we're moving away from extended student exclusions, and we are focused on a treatment and return protocol. So we are going to be taking information from parents. So it would be parents and guardians who are confirming whether a child has head lice. And once they've confirmed that with the school, the school will suggest treatment. They will be asked to go speak with their pharmacist or their family physician, whatever, they're available and willing to do. And then they need to confirm that they have completed a treatment. They will return to school upon confirmation that they have participated in a treatment. The other piece that I would suggest is not changing is we're still notifying families. So when there is a case of head lice noted in the classroom, we will continue to put the letter out to all families in that class to ensure that they're aware that they can also then check their child's heads. And we will continue to advise parents and support them in the completion of the treatments as needed. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out before I ended is that across the GTA, this change or these changes will bring us into alignment with other GTA school boards. We were one of the last ones to have an exclusionary policy. So the timing just worked out nicely in alignment with the Halton Region Public Health's changes as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have speakers. First up, Jean, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, through the vice chair. I noticed at the top of the document here, it has Pediculosis Head Lice, and then it says English. I take it that this will appear in many different languages then?
Yes, if you currently go to our board website, it's actually translated into numerous, probably our top languages. That is certainly a decision that, once we get it approved, we can decide whether we wish to do the translation in all those other languages. We don't really have different languages for all of our other policies or procedures. So that's something we're going to look into.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Amy.
Thank you so much for this, and I mean that full-heartedly. I remember prior to the pandemic, we had a very, very lengthy discussion at this board table about whether or not Pediculosis was something that actually required to go to the measures that we were taking. And I'm so happy to see that we are now understanding it's a nuisance, it's an annoyance, and it's nasty, but it's not going to hurt anybody. So this is a good thing. I would only ask that on the, I believe it's the second last page, where the parents are signing this confirmation form, we've used the word retreat. And retreat usually means to back away from. I think what we mean here is re-treat, which would have a hyphen. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a very good, a very good point, thank you.
All right, I do have a question. There are two versions in the agenda. One says marked, one says clean. But on the marked one, I don't see any markings. So I'm not, I'm not sure which version is the clean one. Is it, is the clean version the one that's got four bullet points under the intended purpose? Or two bullet points under intended purpose?
Okay, I think that, I think what I'd have to do is if I make you an editor, then you will be able to see the changes. So I'm going to do that right now. Because you asked me this question, and I'm like, I can see all the changes in the marked ones. So I'm going to just make you an editor. And then if you just hit refresh on your copy, I believe you'll all be able to see on the marked copy, you'll see green and you'll see crossed outlines. I'm not really sure why that happened, but can you try that for me and let me know? Can you see the changes now, Donna? You can see them now, yeah. So sometimes when we share, I learned this just the other day, when things get shared, if you don't have the editing access, you're not able to see the suggested changes. So it's anyone with the link. So is there more than just Donna or Shin-Yi? You can see them, okay. So they, it should be, just hit refresh at the... Should be the same link, because that's how I opened it. Yeah, okay, so they are there. Trustee Rocha, sorry, I don't know. But yes, now I understand that that's how, when it gets shared, if you're not an editor, you won't be able to see the changes, so. So the clean shouldn't have anything but just, there shouldn't be any comments, no lines crossed out, but the marked copies, okay. Sorry about that. Yes, yeah. The clean one is what it will look like without any of the, you won't see the changes. And the marked copy shows all of the changes.
There are four bullet points there, I'm seeing this correctly?
Yes, on the clean version.
Ah, okay.
And those four bullet points are also in the marked copy. Just moved, like, you'll, when you look at the two of them, you'll see the difference.
Okay, that makes way more sense now.
So sorry, thank you, now I understand.
All right, Robbie, go ahead.
In your presentation, you said a pharmacist or a physician. And I know the farm specifically says has completed a pharmacist-recommended treatment for head lice. Do you want pharmacist or physician in there?
I think most families, I said that when I was speaking. I could certainly add that in because it certainly is a recommendation if that's what the parent chooses, so I'll add physician in there. I think in most cases, the pharmacist will be able to resolve that. So I'm happy to consider that if you think it's best to keep them both there or if we just stick with pharmacist. But yeah, some families may go to their physician. So I think I'll take that advice and put them both in there, thank you.
So just clarification on that very point made by trustee Bryden. Often now, when you go for medical assistance, you're seeing a nurse practitioner as opposed to a physician. Is that, is that a nurse practitioner considered to be a physician?
No. Do you know what? I'm wondering if maybe I just put in medical professional and pharmacist, no. I'm seeing no, because I do think they're, right. Because one of the reasons we said pharmacist was because we wanted to make sure they were going to seek an appropriate treatment, because there are some other treatments out there. So I suggest we leave it at pharmacist and knowing that people could choose to go to their family physician if they wanted.
All right, seeing no further questions, Superintendent Fowler will figure something out. All right, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, thank you Superintendent Fowler. Now I'll turn it over to Superintendent Nagoy to speak to agreements and contracts AP.
Thank you, and this AP is mostly in relation to agreements such as transfer funds agreements with ministries and other agencies. It could be both municipal, municipal, provincial, or federal. And there were some changes, just to clarify, that it is the responsibility of the project coordinator, who is the school principal, system principal, or the department manager, to ensure that the requirements under those agreements are met in terms of reporting, that line submissions, eligibility of activities and expenses and so forth. So the hopefully marked copy is available and everybody can see the markings. It was reviewed the last couple of years. It has not made it to the board, unfortunately, but the dates have been updated as well as the cross-reference, and we'll put it in the new template before we post it.
Okay, I see no speakers, so I want to thank everyone for their updates on the APs. And I assume we will see them under the, as a consent agenda item at the next board meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have a policy, and that is the Respectful Workplace Policy. I will look to the person wearing two hats this evening. Go ahead, Sari.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rocha. So before you, again, is the Revised Respectful Workplace Policy. At the last board meeting, I provided trustees an overview, a summary of, hopefully it was as succinct as possible in the most linear of ways in terms of how we've gotten to this version of the policy. Obviously, the revisions and the approach is, was informed by the feedback of the public, discussions at the board meeting during the 2223 school year, discussions at Committee of the Whole, and a few other discussions in other, during, in other committee forums. Also, throughout this exercise, I've received many, many different questions and suggestions and offerings of feedback in relation with the policy ought to look like in terms of content and format. And I'm grateful for that, specifically the feedback I received from trustees and others focused on the objective section. For example, there are some objectives in the view of, some of our trustees need to be articulated a bit more clearly and succinctly. In addition, you know, feedback in relation that this policy needs to really be clear in that it speaks to all staff, not only teachers, which the policy intends to speak to all of our staff, not necessarily teachers. It speaks to teachers, education workers, support staff in this building, with the understanding that our teachers are, you know, by virtue of the function that we deliver, and that is instruction, they are at center stage in terms of the services and the goods that we deliver to our students. The format of the policy was also something that we received feedback in relation to, the idea of a policy statement versus policy objectives and the distinction between the two. The principal section and what this section ought to speak to. Other, I would call them, housekeeping in nature in terms of some repetitions in the policy or definitional issues, all of which is great feedback. So with that, I'm happy to take any further questions from trustees. But I'm also wondering if I can propose that what I've been doing over the past few months and weeks is collating and collecting all of this feedback that we've received from a variety of stakeholders, including our trustees. So perhaps in the interest of efficiency and really diving into the finer details of this policy, I invite trustees to join me in establishing, you know, a working group, if I can frame it in those terms, that looks at all of the feedback that we received. And this working group can meet, to really streamline the feedback, cross them off of our list, implement them as revisions to the policy, and bring it back to trustees in its most pristine, let me, possible iteration or version. So that's an offering I put before you to consider. And again, I'm happy to take any questions in relation to anything that I've spoken to or any further comments and questions. Thank you.
I'm looking to the speakers list. There are no speakers right now, but I want to say that I think that's a brilliant idea. I think we all have opinions to express, and I think if it were to be done in that suggested group, I think we'd get a lot more accomplished. So if you're looking for volunteers, I will put my name forward. And if anyone knows right now, if they want to be part of that group, I encourage you to put your hand up now. Otherwise, you can email Sari if that's amenable to you, to be emailed. Oh, okay, Robbie, is that an expressive interest? Okay, okay, Amy, that's three. We can have up to two more because we can never meet more than five. Okay, oh, Margot, are you, do you have a question or are you volunteering?
Volunteering.
Fantastic, we are up to four. Going once, going twice. All right, Sari, you've got four to start. And if somebody else decides to contact you afterwards, you're allowed one more trustee.
Great, thank you so much. I'm more than happy to lead the work and partner with trustees. Obviously, the document eventually will be a document that trustees own as per the Education Act as a policy. Nonetheless, I'm happy to lead the work and bring it back to the broader group. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up... Next up on the agenda, we've got Margot, who will be discussing the, an item from the Halton Police Board. And before Margot gets on the line, we do see you, Margot. She did send out a document. We're going to do a little bit of a working session right now because Margot does need feedback. So if you can open the document that Margot sent you so that we can start working on it. And the floor is yours, Margot.
Thanks, Tanya. So again, if everybody recalls, it was either last week or two weeks ago, I received a letter from Halton Regional Police regarding their strategic plan and ways forward. They've asked for input from the community, and they ask us three key questions, which I've attached to a Google Doc for you. What, in your opinion, are main threats to the safety of everyone in the Halton Region? What, in your opinion, has to be achieved to reduce the likelihood or impact of those threats to the safety of everyone in Halton Region? And then question three, anything else that you would like to share with us about the current of future or future state of the community safety in the Halton Region? So I think as a school board with the partnership that we have with Halton Regional Police, I think it's really important that we lend our voice to this, these pieces of information they've asked for. So as Tanya alluded to, and I also shared earlier, there is a Google Doc which has each of those three questions where you can submit your response or concerns or ideas so that I can then craft a letter to send back to the Halton Region Police. And I'd like to do it sooner versus later because this letter was received, doesn't have a date on it, but it was at least a week and a half ago. So I appreciate any input and help with this. And if anybody had any questions, please let me know.
So thank you, Margot. People are wondering, where is this document? So in two places. In the Q and A document I created this morning, Margot posted a link attached to the agenda item. You can access it that way. And I have just sent out an email to everyone in the room with the link to the document because that might be easier. So if you can, I see Donna, I see Robbie are in the document and Carol. So if you can go into the document and start working, sharing your thoughts, and we'll use this time to, to get some of the work done so that Margot can compile the information and, and send it off to the police board. So what I'll do is I'll put 10 minutes on the clock. And after 10 minutes, we'll regroup and we'll continue on. Is that okay, Margot?
Sounds good to me, Tanya. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions number two and three are free. Lots of space there.
And I know we have time tonight, but again, Tanya, you've had this for at least, I think I sent it out about a week ago. So if you are still thinking about it, I'm happy to, or I am going to be leaving this forum open till at least tomorrow night when I'll take a look at trying to draft that letter to the police, please. Thank you.
Margot, would you like staff input as well on this document or is this just for trustees?
So it was sent, it was sent to the trustees, but I think staff's input would be valuable because they're on the ground. So I'm happy to share it. The link is open to anybody who has the link. So if you want to share it more broadly, Tanya, that would be great. It was an invitation to trustees, I think just as elected officials, but I think that as with anything, partnerships with staff who might have some other pieces from within the schools that they've had direct consultation, particularly safe schools, might be advantageous.
All right. So for now, I'm going to share what the superintendents in the room and which are Jennifer, Roxanna, Jonathan, and Sari. There are three questions, so I know the first one's really full.
So Jonathan, I saw you fix some wording, but those were the words that came directly from the letter.
And if you do have something you want to say, but you've already said it, maybe make a notation that you agree or use your own words to say the same thing. Because what that does is it reinforces to Margot the, the importance of the feedback. We have just under two minutes to add your thoughts. Exam is over. Pencils down. All right. All right. So I want to thank everyone for their 10 minutes of hard work. There's like two pages worth of information, so I think we've accomplished a lot. Margot, you've got a lot to work with.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate that. This way we get a fulsome picture, sending it back. If there's anybody who is still thinking about things and is going to want to add more, if you could just drop me a note so that if I'm writing this up, I'm waiting to see if there's anything more coming in. But I'll probably start taking a crack at it tonight if nothing else is going to be added. So, but thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all your help.
All right. Thank you, Margot. Up next, we are at item number four, committees, standing committees. We have a few items here. First up, we have the Governance Document Review Committee with the first item being trustee expenses. So Amy, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you, I would. I sent all of you a link to the document that we're going to be looking at. There were some small changes made to the copy that was in the committee of the whole folder. After consultation with Roxanna, we decided that we needed to make our account naming throughout the document a little bit more consistent. And so there were places that referred to the trustee account, and that has been changed to trustee expense account so that if everyone is aware that we're referring to the $6,000 annual expense account when we talk about that account. We are made sure throughout the document that all of the references to accounts aligned with where the money's actually coming from. And Roxanna approved the content. This is Roxanna approved. So as we go through the document, you'll see that most of the changes that have been made are specifically as a result of the motion that was passed last month where we decided to make changes to our expense account and how they were paid out. The very first thing is the definitions. We have been working diligently to move definitions out of policies and into our policy and procedure framework policy as an appendix. So these definitions will be moved out. That wasn't part of the scope of work from the, the motion that we passed, but it was logical to do it now rather than wait another three years for the next review of this document. Also there, you'll see under expenses, 3.7, there is a change. 5,000 has turned into 6,000. And we are now calling it expense account instead of travel, personal, professional development, and office supplies account. So it's, it's a little bit broader and not as limiting because when you look at 3.8, the list of things that you can actually expense go beyond what was in the definition prior. In 3.8, we've removed transportation because that is now being funded through the trustee's transportation and mileage account. Then we move down to 3.10, and you'll see trustee's expense account. And I think somebody just dinged in.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, if you're okay, Amy, we'll ask you questions as we go along.
I'm good with that.
All right. Margot, go ahead.
Yeah, I just figured it would be good because that way don't forget. So it's just a quick question. Roxanna, we had talked a little bit about it before. I'm just wondering, in this trustee account, are student trustees included in this? Is this expense thing for everyone?
So the trustee expense account, which is the individual account, has not been updated for the student trustees. However, the language is broad enough that the mileage and travel expenses can be captured under the trustee expense, the trustee mileage slash travel expense account, that is a group account. So if there was an intention to modify their actual individual expense account, that was not captured in the motion or in here. So that remains the same.
If I could just respond to that as well, we had a brief conversation about that this afternoon, and was suggested that perhaps there needs to be a governance procedure for student trustee expenses. And so that is now on the radar for the Governance Document Review Standing Committee to work on after the long list of items that are currently underway get resolved. But it's something that we definitely need to, need to look at.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome. Moving down to 3.11, travel costs, including mileage at the current HDSB rate, parking and tolls, has been added into this section because it was removed from up above in 3.8. So it's just been moved down to 3.11 and is being reimbursed through the trustee mileage travel account. So those are two new things. One is a move and one is the change of the name of the account. After the list of places that we are allowed to expense, there was talking about the old way of doing the reimbursement for transportation expenses. So that has been removed now that we have a new system in place. Under 312, again, references to the old way were removed. References to the trustee mileage, mileage, travel account were added. And then at the end, the stipulation that the remainder, if any, will be reimbursed through the trustee's expense account. And that is in the case that somebody decided to fly when it was cheaper to drive. They will be only reimbursed for the They will be only reimbursed for the cost of driving, and the remainder, if any, will be reimbursed through the trustee's expense account. There's not too many places that it's cheaper to drive than to fly, so I can't imagine that happening very often. Under 315, the word "and" has been added because the list required an "and", and it didn't have one before, so it was just a grammatical fix. And then moving down...
Sorry, Robbie, did you want to?
Oh, do you have a question?
Ask a question now?
Back, way, way back when you said definitions were being struck, in the copy I have, definitions are still present. Is that a change to be made?
Yeah, they're still there, but you can't see it because you don't have editing access. It's highlighted in the commenting to be removed.
Awesome. Just wanted to make sure I'm...
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Oh, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So for the train, so do we differentiate via train and go train? Because go train, we consider that's a public transit, local transit. So how do we differentiate that in the CP?
I don't see any differentiation. They're both modes of travel that are acceptable. You would be expected to take the mode of travel that was most economical. So if the go train costs less, take the go train, and if the via train costs less, take the via train. If you're going into Toronto, though, I can't imagine you'd take a via train instead of a go train. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Moving down to 3.24, again, the trustee's expense account, adding the word "account" in there because it wasn't there before. Then under 3.27, removing travel and putting it down below where the HDSB paid portion is, aligning with the change to our policy that we approved in September.
Sorry, Amy?
Yep.
On 3.25, because we are getting rid of the definitions, one of the definitions pertains to the definition of days. So because we are removing the definition, can we add the word "calendar" to 90 calendar days in 3.25?
Absolutely.
Perfect. And that's the only instance of days in the entire document, so it doesn't need to be added anywhere else.
I have added it. That was a simple one. Thank you for being so simple for me today. Down to 7.1, the addition of the revision history. So that's all that's in there. It's pretty bland. We've already approved this outboard, so you know, there's not much else in there. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, I don't see any questions, but I do have a question for Superintendent Jonathan. And that is, the title of Superintendent of Education, is it information technology or information services? What's the right term?
Should be information services, because it includes IT, but other things like privacy, access, data protection.
Okay, so we'll make that change as well.
Thanks for that, Jonathan.
Okay, are there any other questions on expenses, trustee expenses? Okay, seeing no other questions. Amy, do you know, will this be coming to the next board meeting?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Onto the next item. You are up again, committees and appointments. Yeah, I just did. Jean, you're out of order. Go ahead, go ahead, Amy.
So on the agenda, if you just follow the link for committees and appointments, there are a few more changes to this one than the other one, and you'll understand them when we get there. A lot of the changes were to simplify the document and not have things repeated multiple times throughout. One of the other changes was prior, this was known as committees and appointments, but we also use the word appointment for our process of appointing people to committees. So it was being used in two different ways, so we've decided to go with appointments to committees and other roles. It's just a clearer, more concise way of explaining exactly what it is that we're talking about in this governance procedure. So where we had in the document before appointments as things like student trustee mentor, we now call those and other roles instead of and appointments, so that we're being consistent with the titling of the document. Under general 2.1, we put in the rules about quorum, and that trustee membership on committees and working groups must be fewer than quorum of the board. This was in about four different places of the old document, so having it right up front, right at the beginning, makes it clear. 2.1.3 and 2.1.4 had said, may resign from any committee or is deemed to have resigned from any committee, and we've changed that to any appointed role. That way, we're covered on all bases, not just committees. 2.2.5 and 2.2.6 are new. When a committee is newly struck, appointments, taking into consideration the criteria outlined in section 2.2, will be approved by resolution of the board soon thereafter. That had existed up top, where it was, and it was awkward in reading, because it didn't reference the criteria in 2.2.2. And so we made two sections. 2.2 is annual appointments. And while this committee is newly struck, it will become an annual appointment. Where working groups are not annual, and they're not committees, and they're not striking committee appointments. They are created throughout the year when needed, as we've witnessed in the last month. So that has been added in there so that there's a reference to the process.
Amy?
Yep.
I have a question.
Yep.
For item 2.2.3,
Yep.
it talks about annual appointments will be approved by resolution of the board by the second board meeting in December. Now that our, so it made sense when our term started on December 1st, but now that our term starts on November 15, I'd like to make a suggestion, and perhaps we need to reword that to read, annual appointments will be approved by resolution of the board by the first board meeting following the striking committee process. So that could be... I can send you the, my, I can send you the...
Yeah, I can't edit this one.
Yeah, I'll send you the verbiage.
Yeah, I get it.
It doesn't hold us to a specific meeting.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
That makes a lot of sense. Under 3.2.2, talks about appointing trustees to the Student Discipline Committee pick and Supervised Alternate Learning Committee. And there was no process listed there, so now we've added that during the annual striking committee process. Just to make it clear that that is part of the annual process. 4.1.3, a resolution to form a committee. We've added...
Amy, one second. Joanna has a question. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, sir. If I can just take us back to point... the trustee shall be deemed to have resigned. The point above around actually having a written notice of resignation makes me wonder if 2.1.4 should also have some kind of a more formal follow-up or resolution with the trustee in question, right? Because right now, it's kind of ambiguous. They're deemed to have resigned. But will there be some kind of a confirmation from the chair or the lead of the committee that that's the case?
That's a good point.
Could there be something?
Yeah, that's a very good point, and I will add that. Thank you. So down under 4.1.3, we're forming a committee. And when we form a committee, there are things that we are required to outline in the formation of that committee, one of being the purpose of the committee. And we never added scope of the committee's work in there. And that is a really important thing, because especially if the purpose of the committee is to review only one aspect of the committee, and it doesn't state that in the report, and they end up doing a review of the entire document, that's a much bigger piece of work. So it's really important to define the scope of the committee's work. So that's why that was added in there. Under 4.1.10, we were committing to giving five days' notice of a committee meeting. And it was felt amongst members of the Governance Document Review Standing Committee that two days was more reasonable, because oftentimes we can resolve to meet more quickly than five days. And since our committees are smaller, it's not, we don't need to deal with as many people's calendars.
Are those calendar days or business days?
Those are going to be business days, I would think.
Okay.
Do you want that to say business days?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, I will make that say business days. 4.1.11, all non-statutory committee and working group meetings are subject to section 201... 207.1, requirement that all meetings be open to the public unless the matter under discussion is covered by section 207.2 or 2.1. And we have moved this, which was, again, one of those things that was listed three or four times throughout the document, to this spot, because it applies to all non-statutory committee and working group meetings. So there's no need to have that listed elsewhere in the document. We can say it once. Under 4.2.2, standing committees, we added the word "annual" in front of striking committee process because there was a question about whether or not it was meant to be annual, and it was meant to be annual, and we thought that striking committee process explained that it was annual, but it didn't to some people, so we're clarifying. Question? Yep.
In this very section, it talks about may appoint a vice chair. Vice chair could...
Sorry, under the same section where it refers to may appoint a vice chair, under 4.2.2, I wonder if that could read backslash co-chair?
It could. But it would be a forward slash.
Okay. Alrighty then.
Sorry, I have OCD too. Okay, so again, then under...
Can I hop on on 4.2.7?
Absolutely. That's where I was going.
Great. Before we get to the actual change proposed there, as needed, working groups may be formed to work on a specific matter for a limited time. We bumped into this in our last board meeting. That's a passive construct. Does that power sit with the standing committee to form it?
Yeah.
Can we state that the standing committee may form a working group?
It states it earlier. It states it under 2.2.6, working group appointment, or working group appointments will be made by the Association of the Ute Standing Committee. It doesn't say the other part. I'll add it. I messed up, sorry.
No worries.
Okay. So then under 4 point... Where was I?
4.2.7.1.
4.2.7.1. We've added the scope of the working group in there. And that should be the same explanation as prior. We feel the scope is important, because the purpose may not deliver the scope. 4.2.7.3, oh, here we go. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Applicable Standing Committee will determine the membership of working groups, taking into consideration the criteria. But it doesn't talk about forming the group. Okay. I'll fix it. I put the wrong thing up at the top. I got repetitive and put the same thing up at the top that I had at the bottom. Okay, 4.3.2. This is why we bring it to committee of the whole. The composition, i.e. the number of staff and trustees of the ad hoc committee, has been added into any motion to form an ad hoc committee. And that is because we need to know how many people will be active on the committee. And as we noted last week, when Director Ennis brought forward his motion for forming an ad hoc committee, he was looking for four trustees, a student trustee, and a certain number of staff members. So this is thought to be a good way to move forward, especially on committees that have a blend of staff and trustees. 4.3.5, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Board will determine the trustee membership of ad hoc committees as outlined in section 2.2 above. Staff may also be members of an ad hoc committee. Staff membership will be determined by the Director. So making sure that everyone's in their own lane there. Then generally, at the bottom, 5.3.4, private sessions shall generally proceed public session of the Board. We added the word "generally" because private session might be held without any need for a public session. There might be no motions made, nothing to ratify, and therefore no reason to hold public session. It may have been private so that we could conduct a discussion regarding negotiations or staffing or any number of reasons. And if no motions were made, there would be no reason to have a public session. So we've added the word "generally", because we did experience last year a couple of times where we didn't need it.
I have a question, a comment?
Yep.
5.2.3 and 5.3.5, they're saying the same thing. So I'm wondering, can we move them to the general section?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're getting into the appendices, and there are some changes made there. And of course, my formatting isn't perfect, because I copied from a PDF. So please don't tell me my paging's wrong, because I know it's wrong. If we look at Appendix B, committee of the whole meeting agenda, private session, there had been in their OPSPA update. But there are times when trustees on other committees or appointments, other roles, need to bring something forward in private session. So we've decided, instead of having a laundry list of all of the different places that people might be coming from with an update, we would just call them trustee updates. And so that doesn't eliminate the OPSPA update. It just becomes more inclusive of other updates that may need to be made. Yes, and then we're getting into the terms of reference. And in the terms of reference, we've removed the quorum membership pieces and that the meetings will be called and conducted as per the committees and appointments governance procedure, because they have to be conducted in accordance with the procedure. So that statement is redundant. So those two things have been removed from all of the standing committee terms of reference. And on the OPSPA Board of Director, I think that was the one, wasn't it? No, that one's fine. Student trustee mentor, saying that it was a one-year term. It's annual striking committee, so it doesn't need to say that it's a one-year term, because annual striking... term, because Annual Striking Committee. So that was it. It was it was more um a cleaning up of things than anything else, but um yeah, there's some, I will bring, make those uh changes that you suggested tonight, and I will bring it forward to the next board meeting. If there are any more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yep. I'm not seeing any other questions, so Amy, thank you very much for that report, and glad to see that the report has decreased in size. All right, uh, next up, we're still on the Governance Document Review Committee, and we've got Carol with the Appendix B of the Honoria Policy.
Thank you, Trustee Rocha. Uh, this one's quite short in comparison. Uh, if you'll remember, last month, at Committee of the Whole, we had a presentation um by Superintendent Nagoy, talking to us uh about the process for claiming our honoria for meetings. And there was some information that was missing from our um our policy. And um in specifically, in Appendix B was um, there was no mention specifically around using the claims process that is provided by the Board for us, as well as the approval process. So that's now, as you can see, been added to Appendix B. Um, there's enough generalization in this appendix, it should stand the test of time if there have to be some um changes made by staff, just in terms of detailed processes um around the technology and and how exactly we submit our claims, um, that should not require a change to this policy, this is a bit more general. If there's any questions, we can take that, and of course Superintendent Nagoy is here this evening as well, if there's any um questions around what was added or what's coming.
All right, I, oh, Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. I noticed that in the chart, that the Chair um doesn't have an approving supervisor, it says NA. Is that um, is that good practice?
Go ahead, Roxana. So the, I I would be the reviewer of the claim to ensure that they're eligible, they follow the process, the the procedure, et cetera. So it would sort of be both of them for uh the role of segregation of duties. It really cannot be anybody else. So if the Chair is uh reviewing all trustees' expenses, another trustee cannot review the Chair's expenses. The Director cannot review the Chair's expenses, because the Chair is reviewing the Director's expenses as well, and the Director is reviewing mine. So it's uh, you know, we've put in place the segregation of duties so tightly, that there really isn't an independent party uh to, so so there there's two in terms of a supervisor and approver. Um, in my role, I would cover both, but I am not technically the supervisor of the Chair of the Board, so I don't think it's appropriate to put that position there. Uh, however, the function will be covered.
I'm just simply worried about optics, um, and that someone might wonder why that, but I I understand uh the process here, and and good to know that in fact, there is a uh, you know, oversight, uh, even though it says NA. I just don't know what else could be there, but I just wonder about the optics of having that there, thank you.
Um, I have I have a, maybe a suggestion. Could we perhaps put like a little asterisk and indicate what the asterisk means? And it could be that this, the Superintendent of Business Services will approve and will review, uh do, will do both roles, without necessarily calling you the Chair's supervisor. So it's almost like, just a little, we've caught it, we, and it, the item gets addressed.
So are you thinking in the approval of payment column, where it says Superintendent of Business Services, we'd have an asterisk? And then at the bottom, clarify that?
Yeah, just clarify, if that's okay. Yeah? All right, seeing no further speakers. Um, I did want to bring to your attention, so at the next board meeting, um, Roxana's going to bring forth Appendix A for approval, and we'll also have Appendix B for approval. They're not being merged, because it's coming from two different audiences, so you will see two line items on uh the next agenda for Appendix A and Appendix B. Okay, so thank you, Carol, for that. We are now on to voting pro, oh, I'm next. Okay, so voting provision for Board Reports, Appendix C. So in your uh agenda package, um, what I've shared with you is a lit, actually, it's two parts. So the top half of the report highlights some of the changes that have been include uh recommended, and uh the bottom half is what we are proposing. Um, so at the last board meeting, I did ask for a a working group to be formed. And um what ended up happening is uh I got a lot of feedback from the members of the Governance Document Review Committee, so Amy, Joanna, Carol, and myself. Uh, together, we we put this forward. So very high level, what happened is uh there was consensus in that the report, as it stands today, is one pager, it's a big grid, that has probably over twenty reports listed. The problem with this current appendix is that it's not an inclusive list. And not every report that comes to board is mentioned on this list, so we figured, well, why try to list all the reports and inadvertently leave something out? And that doesn't also leave room for reports that just pop up. So um, to make things easier, the proposed Appendix C will only list reports that we think should appear twice before the Board. And when we say twice, it doesn't necessarily mean to at two board meetings, it doesn't necessarily mean twice at committee. What we're proposing is that these ten reports will appear first at Committee of the Whole, so that there could be a fulsome discussion on what is being proposed. And then it will make its second appearance at the board meeting for decision. So those are the ten um that we've uh proposed, and tonight, we have time to discuss if these are the ten that should appear at Committee of the Whole first, before going to Board for decision. Are there reports that need to be removed, or did, was the report missed? Um, and I want you to also keep in mind that if your, if our trustees were not ready to vote during a meeting, the process is that you can always defer decision to a later meeting, so that hasn't changed. So uh, what I'm going to do is I will open the floor for discussion, and you can share your thoughts on what the proposed Appendix C means and your feedback. So first up, Gina.
Um, thank you very much. I'm looking at this list of ten, and I can recall some of our more controversial decisions made at this board table, having to do with um number nine, school naming. And I'm wondering if the public knows that they can delegate at Committee of the Whole. Traditionally, we see delegations happening at board meetings, but making this come up first at the Committee of the Whole, and then write to the Board for decision, would mean that we would be faced with delegations on the night of a decision. And uh, it's going to be interesting, as the delegation work group meets, that's something that's, could be uh something that's up for discussion. So I just bring that forward as a thought um for people to consider, thank you.
All right, so I'll answer that question. So delegations are available to be had at Committee of the Whole, we've had them in the past, we we welcome them. Um, are, is the public aware? Yes, I mean, even when we put out an agenda, um, the uh, the option is there to to delegate, and is clear in our delegation process that we do accept delegations at both Committee of the Whole and at Board Meeting. And going back to your second point, that we may receive delegations on the same day we need to vote, that happens today with any report that comes to Board. Um, so it's not unique to school naming. And again, if trustees feel on that day that they need more time, they have the option to defer. Kelly, you had your hand up?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I have some concerns about a few of these. Um, the first one is the educational development charges. I believe there is a set script that has to be done for those. And um, I I would have thought it would have to be done at the Board, so at the Board, not at Committee of the Whole. So um, that's one. Um, I'm just trying to find... Sorry, because I had to open my uh thing to talk, I have to find now the actual document. Um, another one is around the boundary reviews. Um, and for the same reason, it'd be the long-term accommodation plan, the multi-year plan, the operational plan, and school naming. They, I know that we publicize that we have Committee of the Whole meetings, but I do not believe we actually have people watch us, or if we do, it's very few. The only people we get are at board meetings, which is evidenced by how many are in the audience right now. I mean, I can't see that, I'm just guessing. So um, my concern is if we're not at two um board meetings, that the public actually will not know that they have been discussed already, and will believe it is a done deal with only coming to the Board once. Um, so um, because there's some of the bigger items that we have to deal with, and and the budget as well is another one, um, we, I think they need to be at the board table on multiple occasions, because I believe that the public actually needs that opportunity to um have its voice, and to um at least be informed. And unless we can get, I guess, make them aware about the Committee of the Whole, um, and um, the process, I I, to me, it it just doesn't work.
Okay, so I I'll respond to your EDC. There are two different types of EDC charges. There are new bylaws, and then there are changes to the bylaws. So this one is specifically for new bylaws. Um, and I have confirmed, it does not have to be two board meetings, it can be at a public meeting such as today. Um, so Committee of the Whole would count, Board of the Meeting counts, and you're right, there is a prescriptive script, which would be adhered to, which is what currently happens. So that's in response to the EDCs. Um, the other ones you mentioned, um, I think you mentioned boundary reviews, uh, school naming, and a few others. Um, right now, when there's something that involves schools and communities, there is a lot of work with the communities, so they are aware of the issues or the items that will be coming to Board soon. So for example, school naming, there's a survey that goes out, the the community's involved, so there's a lot of publicity on that. Um, so by default, they know, they know what's happening. Um, same, same with boundary reviews, parents of those schools are involved, and they are told when the information is coming to Board. So the only practice there would be, is coming to Committee of the Whole um on this day for discussion. Um, and I'm going to look to um the others who worked on this list, if you have anything you'd like to add, before we go on to the next person. Uh, go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. Yeah, I was part of working on this list. Um, and I'm also um just embarking on a a working group to look at the delegation process, um, the policy and governance procedure. And part of what we're looking at in that is how to engage parents beyond delegation. Um, how, what other ways are there for them to be heard? What other formats can we have, other than delegation nights, or delegations at board meetings or Committee of the Whole meetings? And I do think a lot of it is about getting the word out. And I think um, one, one thing we could be doing is um, part of the the things that we say at a board meeting, when we get to the delegation section, we can say, just a reminder, you can also delegate at Committee of the Whole meetings. And if we say that regularly, at every single board meeting, people that are interested in what's happening at the Board will hear us saying that. And and perhaps we need to be, you know, when we have our super council meetings, we're meeting with our our school councils, let them know, you can delegate at Committee of the Whole, or at Board. Or both, if if you're going to bring a different uh, you know, um, piece of information. Um, it's good for our communities to know the delegation process, it's good for our communities to be engaged and wanting to be heard. And so I'm fully in favor of ramping it up in Committee of the Whole, in order to ensure that people are are being heard. But I'm also excited to hear about what the working group is going to come up with, in terms of other ways that we haven't thought of yet, to engage parents.
All right, thank you, Amy. Um, you're actually the next speaker with a question, so, did you? Okay, perfect. Um, uh, Carol, go ahead.
So Kelly, I uh share your concerns, and we did have a a bit of a discussion about this. And what I perceive to be maybe one issue that we could potentially deal with, um, that would make um the way that that Tanya has proposed, that we look at this um work well, is when I look on the website, and I've only been a trustee for a short time, so not that long ago, I was a parent and a community member, and so I can sort of see, when I look at the website, how some confusion might exist around how we meet. And I note on the website that we have a different page for board meetings from Committee of the Whole. And I just wonder if part of tackling this issue could be to change how those things are posted. And sort of, um, you know, from the perspective of delegations, if you would like to speak to the full Board, the opportunities are both board meetings and Committee of the Whole. So perhaps those could be on one page and considered almost as one item, although of course, we know the difference between the two. And then committees would be um subsets of the Board, because as we know, other than Committee of the Whole, all of our committees are subsets, not the full eleven of us. So that might be one way, I don't know, um, Kelly, if you had any thoughts on that, but if that might help to provide some clarity for the public. As I said, I'm kind of coming at this from, you know, just a year ago, I was someone who wasn't on the Board and and didn't fully appreciate the the nuance, I guess, between the the different ways that we meet.
All right, thank you, Carol. Uh, Robbie?
I saw Kelly's hand, Kelly, did you have a follow-up question?
I did, but go ahead, Robbie, I can, I can
Okay.
Ask mine again later.
I'm I'm thinking of the, this policy says it shall go to Committee of the Whole first. I'm thinking of a small subset of cases where we have something come up that misses Committee of the Whole one month, but could hit a board meeting and a second board meeting before Committee of the Whole comes again. Um, are we potentially slowing ourselves down by not allowing it to come to Board twice, instead of Committee of the Whole and then Board?
My brain is working right now. My brain is working right now. I think the, the impetus for this was because reports were coming to committee of the whole, then board, then board. So by the time we devoted on it, we had seen it three times, and it was a bit much. So the idea there is, let's cut it back to two. And I think what a lot of this has done is brought it back to two. And also because at committee of the whole, we can have more fulsome discussions, we can look through it thoroughly, spend more time on it. It's, it's less formal, like what's happening right now. So it, it created that space for that conversation that's required for us to fully, to make a more fulsome decision. So I'm going to keep thinking about this, but I will open it up to whoever wants to comment on, on Robbie's point. And I think Amy wants to comment, so go ahead, Amy.
Yeah. We're one of the only boards, in fact, we are the only board that I know of that has items that come to the board twice. It's not a regular practice. It was a practice that was in place for years and years that we've struggled with bringing it in, under control, as our board meetings have gotten longer and longer. We just, we wonder sometimes why it is that we're using three board meetings or two board meetings and a committee of the whole meeting, which could take up to a month to get through when we could be doing it in two or three weeks. It's, it's, quite often staff will sit at the presentation desk, ask if there are any questions, and everyone's like, "Well, we asked them last time." You know, and so it feels like there's, and we don't really, and I know that, that lately we've been getting more delegations, but we don't really get very many delegations on things like the budget, the spec ad plan, which you would think we would, and we used to back in the day. But we really don't get that many delegations on that. We get more delegations on, on the highly charged issues than we are on the everyday spending $700 million issues. It's just the mindset, I guess, of, of where people are at right now. But we are, I don't know of another board that has items that come twice. They do committee and board.
All right, thank you.
For clarity, I was asking whether two board could take the place of committee and board in a circumstance where, because we're, committee of the whole only meets once a month. If you miss committee of the whole, you're going three board meetings forward before you can get the next one. Whereas if you could hit board, board, you could be done before you even get the next committee of the whole meeting. That's just what was in my brain.
I appreciate you clarifying that, because I, I think I missed some of that. Okay, thank you. All right. Kelly, go ahead.
So to Robbie's point, he's exactly right. There are times we only have one committee of the whole in a month, and we have two board meetings, and so it may not fall that we would be able to see an item at committee of the whole before it came to the board meeting. And the original intent, and actually the intent it is of committee of the whole is supposed to be a working committee, to have the ability to ask questions in a less formal setting and to do some work of the board without it being the formal moving and voting on of actual motions. My concern, again, is I believe this is minimizing some of the most important work that we do at the board. And the things like the budget and the multi-year plan, and the long-term accommodation plan, the operational plan, and a few others are things that need to be in the public venue on multiple occasions. And I don't, you know, and I heard that we are the only board that has it come to the board multiple times. Well, I not think that's a bad thing. And I also, I'm very glad we're relooking at the delegation policy, because I personally believe that having delegations come to us with very little notice and doesn't necessarily give us the time to respond to them appropriately and for us to have the knowledge of what the actual delegation is about. But that's my personal perspective. But I do feel that by not having this, some of these items at the board table twice, that it is minimizing the most important work that we do as trustees. And I do not see any concerns about, personally, about why they are there twice. And I mean, we have the budget process, and I know that Roxanna does a fantastic job coming to us on multiple occasions in committee of the whole and helping break down how the budget is built, how, what goes into it, what needs to be put into it, how the decisions are made to allow feedback to happen. And so, I mean, that is something that I think is really important, because that is the money that we are responsible for, and we need to make sure that we all understand all those pieces. The same thing actually goes for the long-term accommodation plan. The, we are responsible for moving this system forward into making sure that all schools are supported, are built, or need to be renovated on a timely basis. And the multi-year plan, that goes without saying, that's moving our whole board forward. So I just concern that this is minimizing the actual input of not just the community but us, and giving us a chance to have a silver second plot to make sure that we are doing what we should be doing at the board and making sure that this board is well looked after. Thank you.
Carol?
So my comment was just sort of following up in the conversation prior about the issue around requiring committee of the whole. And I noted that the boundary review that was just announced this evening that we're both involved in, that would cause a big problem for that one in particular, requiring that that boundary review come to a committee of the whole when we don't have one in December at all. So I would just suggest addressing that by changing the language and allowing, I mean, we control the agenda, so how much time we allocate to the board meeting prior to the meeting in which the decision is made could maybe address that issue to ensure that, that there is enough time given and that it's, that we are providing enough consideration on, on a topic. But I think that's, thank you, Robbie, for bringing that up, because that's not a theoretical issue, but one that we would face in a month and a half.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Carol. So as Robbie, as I finally understood what Robbie was saying, I, I did what Carol was suggesting, and that is amending some of the wording. So right now, it has, "The following reports must be presented at committee of the whole prior to being presented at a board meeting for decision." Perhaps we can change it to, "The following reports must be presented at either committee of the whole or a board meeting before being presented for a second time at a..."
For decision.
Yeah, let's even make it simpler, for decision. Okay, so, "The following reports must be presented at committee of the whole or a board meeting prior to being presented for decision." Yes, Donna?
Thank you. And you know that I've been one of the ones really banging the drum on the two drum. I like this compromise, that, that some of them can come to committee of the whole, because quite frankly, I want to, I want to look back to committee of the halls when I first began, and we had program and accommodation committee and governance, we had all different committees, and it was, the committee of the whole was much more robust in terms of trustee work, and I really see this as a way of moving back to that and also being more efficient. So I'm liking the changes that, that you are making to this, and I wanted to say that because I know I've been one of the biggest pains in the fighting against it for you, so I wanted to say that I think there's some really good work done here. Thank you.
You are not a pain. Thank you. Let the record show. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Carol?
Sorry, I can't raise, oh, no, I can't. I couldn't raise my hand, that was still the active speaker, apparently. I wonder if we should or could add a line in there indicating that the preference is that everything on the list does come to committee of the whole? I think as Donna has just highlighted, it's important, but we wouldn't want that to pigeonhole us or to prevent staff from moving forward in something important by having that as a requirement. But certainly, just for future boards beyond us, you know, this will live on, that, that the intention is that everything on that list does come to committee of the whole for the reasons that have been stated.
All right, thank you. I, I'll make a note of that. I'm just going to ask Shin-Yi, because he's in here, and how do you feel about this?
For this one, I just look at a different type of, so it's very hard to say, because I, not all type of discussion I participated before, so. So it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so what I'll do is I will revise Appendix C, and I'll share it. And if anyone wants to make further comments or tweak it, that would be great. And then I'll, I'll present the new and improved version at our next board meeting. Okay, thank you. Let's see, what is next? All right, we are up to 4.2 ad hoc committees. Jean, you have a report for us this evening.
Yes, I do. Just let me get that up. Here it is. Okay, thank you. Folks, before you, you have the, the results of four meetings of Inspire Award Committee. You can see that the not listed are some of the changes, but many changes have been proposed to some of the ways in which we operate our Inspire Awards. And you can see by the report that this past year was a very busy year, with 96 individuals and eight groups being presented with Inspire Awards. That I would have to say has probably been one of the largest years. And I think because of the great response that we had to nominations for Inspire Awards, that prompted us to create the committee that stands today and is working on a remodel of the Inspire Award program. That committee, again, has been very busy, has met four times, has lots of suggestions. But primarily, one of the, the big suggestions that all of the work is centered on is no longer having an evaluation template that would be a scored template, but rather that the evaluation would be simply a yes or a no. It would be based on whether the person had been inspired others and would have had a lasting effect. I'll just read the, the actual wording here. Yes, here it is. Showed that the actions of the nominee went above and beyond inspired others by having that lasting impact. So we're looking for that person who's by virtue of what they've done, or that group by virtue of what they've done, that the, their influence or will have inspired others to have their work continued. And I think that this is going to allow us to have some wonderful nominations come our way. But before we do that, there's lots of work to be done, and the work has already started with the committee already forwarding to the communications department their draft for a video to be created starring our two student trustees. Information has flowed from our committee through to the governance department to look at the admin procedures that need to be, admin procedures and policies that might need some tweaking. The communications department are going to be very, very integral in the work, as it will be Susan Thrasher. And we actually have a schedule of work going all the way out from this committee, all the way to December 4, that would have all of the things that need to happen. Everything from the way in which we're going to promote this, the way in which we're going to release the information to the schools, the video, the promotional posters that are going to go out. But all of that predicated on the actual changes to our procedures, so that we're in a ready-go position for the 1st of January. So again, the committee has been working really hard, has had great ideas, and I'm really excited, looking forward as to seeing this come to fruition and seeing this change and how it's going to have us have a whole new look for this award starting in January 1st. Just looking at this report that I put out before you, yes, this, this Inspire Award program started in May 2016, so it's fully seven years in without this really robust review. And we've been very happy, we've done some tweaks over the years. I can remember sitting on committee with Tracy L. Harrison and others. So there has been some modifications over the years, but nothing like this, what I would call a revamping of our Inspire Award going forward. We all believe that this award program is very essential for our board, and you can see at the beginning of each month, when we give the awards out, just how meaningful they are, when we have people fill the gallery, or when you, as individuals, are presenting within your own school sites or work sites for those who have received this award. So it's, yeah, something that's due, we're happy about that. But anyway, this report, as you see it before you, with the history, with our outcomes of this past year, and with the activities of the committee going forward, and our next steps are outlined as is, and if there should be any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or several of the committee members are here tonight, and they could also help. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any questions, but I do want to acknowledge all the great work you have done leading the ad hoc committee, wrangling people in all different roles, getting them together, attending a meeting, contributing, documenting everything. So kudos to you, job well done, and you're not off the hook yet. Okay, there are no questions, so thank you once again. Jean? Okay, we are moving on to OPSA. But before we move on to OPSA, because we are on the topic of committees, and this is our second last committee of the whole for our one year. We, for the standing committees, a reminder, so I'm looking at Amy and Kelly as the chairs of the standing committees. One of your requirements is to provide a year-end report. So we hope to see that report at the next committee of the whole on November 8. So there's that. And so Amy, Governance Document Review Committee and Trustee Professional Development. Kelly, the Board Self-Assessment Year-End Report. Also, Kelly, on the topic of Board Self-Assessment, is your plan to have the board do a self-assessment at the next committee of the whole?
I believe so. We're having a committee meeting sometime in the next week, and we'll have more details after that.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will move on to OPSA. Jean, you're up next with one of the OPSA resolutions that took place, and it was regarding Jean, you're up next with one of the OPSA resolutions that took place and it was regarding the proposed Board Self-Assessment Tool. Can you give us any details that are available regarding OPSA's work on that committee?
Okay, I know that Amy sits on one of the working teams and Donna, you would be on the executive. I have no information really forward to forward tonight at this time about the work of this development of this template by OPSA, but I think when it does come out, it will be very helpful. But Amy, do you have any, like, is there anything flowing through your committee work?
That's a policy resolution from a member board, so that didn't come through OPSA. That didn't come through the OPSA Working Group, that came from a member board.
Right, but the actually resolution is that OPSA will work to support?
Yeah, but...
In developing the tool?
It hasn't come through the working group.
Okay. Dawn, I don't know if you have any, anything to add on this?
I don't at this point. I know that it did come through at the AGM and was approved by the Board of Directors, but I don't know what it's going to look like yet.
Yeah. So at this point, we have not heard anything at the Board of Director level addressing this, however, there are meetings coming up soon and so there may be more information to share at that time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jean. And then on to the last item in public and that is a video in the boardroom, how great boards meet. This was a link that I had shared with everybody, but I do know that some of you attended the session when it occurred. So the goal for this evening, in the last few minutes that we have, is to share what your takeaways were, what did you learn, what do you think we can implement in our board, how do we work smarter, not harder? So I could either look to a speakers list or we could do, go around the table and start off. And Amy, you're not allowed to start because you've already sent me something. So I will, yes, thank you, Donna, for volunteering. Go ahead.
One of the things that stuck out with me was when they talked about staff reports and the importance of keeping the presentation short, to recognize that any trustee with their salt has read the report and to pull out two or three pertinent details rather than a 15-minute presentation and 62-point PowerPoint presentation defining the report. I'm exaggerative. I have, there was one superintendent that once brought us a 55-point PowerPoint presentation and I nearly lost it. So that's why that one in particular, no, no, he's no longer with the...
Okay, thank you so much for sharing that. And I will share whatever feedback is pertinent to staff, I will share that with Curtis so that way we can move forward. I will only do that once I summarize all of your input and then share it. Okay, thank you. Shin-Yi, would you like to share?
In my first year, this is, I realized it's a very super-long learning curve. So in the boardroom for different APs and the policies, when we ask, as a new trustee asks questions, so all the questions and when I prepare all the questions, this is a learning process actually. And all the feedbacks help me to understand more about our policy and the board business. So that's what I can share.
Okay, thank you. Jean?
Okay, something that you'd like to see implemented, I think that when we have reports coming forward, much to what trustee Daniele said, the idea of that concise, pull out a few nuggets, really focus on that. I think it also has to do for me in implementing it is looking at what it is that we're hoping to achieve by, through that report and sharing that, anticipating questions that might come up. I would like to see us, and I'm not good at this yet, but I'd like to see all of us try to participate a little bit more in the Q&amp;A documents that come out prior to our meetings. And hopefully that if we could do that, we could develop some efficiencies, but also dig deeper into some of the questions. And so I think that would be something that I'd like to see all of us participate in, maybe make a commitment. And again, I'm not a good one for that, but if we could make that commitment, I think that it may pay dividends as we move forward through our meetings.
All right, noted. Thank you. Amy?
Thank you. Well, Tanya already knows mine. I think there are more items that we could put in the consent agenda that don't need to be brought forward independent of the consent agenda. A lot of information items could go in there, the correspondence coming and going could go in there. Presumably trustees read the whole package, so we shouldn't need to have line items for things that trustees should have read. And anything that they have questions about, they can pull.
All right, Kelly?
A board is only as good as the trustees on that board and the fact that all trustees have to participate and to make it a great board.
Thank you. Joanna?
I have nothing more to add and I am a bit delinquent here. I need to view this video. My apologies, I've been catching up on the last several weeks on work. Thank you.
No worries.
But I'll be happy to share in writing.
We understand you were away, so I appreciate your honesty. Naveed?
Good evening, Tanya. I would just echo what Kelly said, that the board is as good, any board is as good as the people participating. So it's more of a comment about myself that I plan to like prepare well for the meetings and keep myself abreast.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure if Mar goes there. She's not. Robbie?
This is still on my to-do list and I will send you written comments before the upcoming session next week.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the honesty. Carol?
I thought it was a great session. I did it live and I'm looking forward to the next one. It left me wanting more information, which is always to me a great way to end a lunch and learn, wishing it was longer. Something I learned, it's not really a new piece of information, I guess, but I think we're doing quite well. Some of the things that the presenter talked about, weaponizing the code of conduct, things like that, I've not seen that happening here, so it makes me feel like we're doing well in comparison to other boards. I don't think we want to settle for doing as well or just better than others. We'd like to be leaders. So something that was reinforced for me is that, you know, we should always strive to do that. There's benefit to examining how we work always to make sure we have an open mind and using our common desire for excellence. Something I'd like to see implemented is a greater focus on data and discussion around specific actions that are informed by that data. That was something that the presenter talked about a little bit, just in terms of reminding boards to be focused on what our purview is. And so she talked a little bit about that piece and I think that's something we could do a little bit better.
All right, we have a phenomenal board. Thank you for watching and learning. And OPSA has planned one for this month, I believe it's next week. And then there's another one in November and the topic then is, I believe, delegations is the topic? I can't remember what this month's topic is, but watch out, watch for your emails from OPSA on those and please sign up. I think back to what Kelly said, that boards are only as good as its members and how they participate. And I think the more PD we have under our belt, the better we are as a board. Okay, so we are at the end of public. Before we wrap up, I just have a few reminders and things I want to mention. Question for Kelly, do you have any update on the ad hoc committee fix the finances?
Sorry, not at this point. I'm scheduling a meeting with Roxanna. I have seven people who volunteered, so I'm going to have to whittle down the number on the committee and hopefully we'll be moving forward and we'll get a Terms of Reference and all that very shortly.
Okay, I just realized I missed trustee questions and comments from the agenda. So are there any trustees and questions, are there any trustee questions and comments for this evening? Okay, seeing none. Now I'll talk about all my reminders. Okay, so reminders, our year end, our last committee of the whole for this anniversary year is November 8th. And I've already mentioned about the reports required from the different committees. And I want to let you know that we will be having a special board meeting. What makes it special is that it's not on our calendar and it is a required meeting because we do have to go in, discuss the topic of negotiation. So be on the lookout for a special board meeting for Monday. It will either be at 5:30 or 7:30 and based on your feedback tonight, we'll make that decision together, 5:30 or 7:30. It will probably be about half an hour. So, and that ties into the PD that we are having anyway on Monday, so as not to have to bring you in for another day.
Can I make just a follow-up comment to that? You will see a number of times where we're going to have to pull together to create a response to get it back to OPSA as negotiations continue and as agreements, tentative agreements are set. I apologize, it's such a really short timeframe. I mean, as I said in my email to you all last night, we met on Friday and a decision from this board is needed by 11 o'clock on Wednesday. So we're going to have to MacGyver in meetings, as Tanya has said tonight. They don't need to be long, but we do need to cover the material with you so that we can have a decision from our board going forward to OPSA. So this will happen frequently, we hope, very frequently as more and more agreements are, roll in and start to get to the point of ratification. Thank you.
I appreciate you setting the expectation that we may have to have these special meetings. Hopefully we can have them tie into our regular board meetings, but when they can't be, then we will have those special meetings. So thank you for that, Jean. So as I said, the next committee of the whole will be on November 8th. And if there are any items you'd like to add to the agenda, please let me know. And also just a heads up, striking committee, as we talked about today in Amy's revised GP, striking committee will be held on November 22nd. There is a document currently circulating with the admin team which outlines all of the available positions, a description of the committees, the time commitment. So once I get that back from the admin team saying that this information is accurate, I will share it ahead of time so that you can go through it and determine which committees or roles you would like to sign up for on November 22nd. So it's just a heads up. All right, so with that being said, our public agenda has been exhausted and we will now move into private session after a five-minute bio break, if that's okay? All right, so thank you everyone and I will see you in five minutes. Thanks.
Naveed, may I ask a question? Sure, please.